I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, our main orders of the day is a few months behind. We should have done this in April. Well, thanks to COVID-19, we couldn't. Now that we've got the elections over, welcome Travis. We're going to sit here on the board. We need to do our appointments. Okay, Deputy Mayor is going to appoint Danny Salmon. Motion's up in his camp.
Probably the appointments.
No appointments.
I think you should. I thought so.
All right, I'll make your point. Dan Salmon, Deputy Mayor.
You need motions for each of them to go or individually? Individually.
Individually, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Associate Village Justice Ricky Stanton, term April 7th, 2021. By the way, Dan's term would be through April 7th, 2021 also.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Deputy Clerk Wendy Snowden, term through April 7th, 2021.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public Health Officer Sean Harnley, term through April 3rd, 2024. That's a four-year.
I'm going to take one.
I'll second.
All in favor? Village Historia Sean Beagle, term through April 7th, 2021.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please, Joe, you could probably do a re- im and probably one motion would do the committees and the ladies and.
For the committees?
Yeah.
Okay, Committees, Capital Future Planning, Trustee Murphy and Trustee Widdrich. Personnel will be Trustee Trillian, Trustee Salmon. Finance, Trustee Murphy, Trustee Salmon. Motion to appoint all three of those.
Some, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Liaisons, Fire Department, Trustee Salmon. Police Department, Mayor Beagle, Trustee Widdrich. Planning and zoning board, Trustee Murphy. Municipal Board, Trustee Trillian. Town, Trustee Trillian. County, Trustee Salmon. Motion for all six to go.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Official under taken action to authorize appropriate insurance coverage, zoning, and relative municipal officials to be adjusted. Motion for that?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Official newspaper, daily publications, Watertown Daily Times.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Notification of regular meetings. Regular meetings on board trustees will be on the third Wednesday of each month at 4:00 P.M. Location for meetings will be at the Village Municipal Building.
I'll make that motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Special meetings may be called by the mayor or by decree of two trustees. Trustees will be notified individually as a village clerk. Notification to the public and the meeting will be made as soon as possible after the scheduling of the meeting for the minimum of 72 hours notice if that time is available.
Motion. Sub move. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions to adopt 2022 advanced approval claims attached. Hopefully everybody has a copy of that, see what we're talking about.
Sub move.
No.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 2020, three designated depositors that also is attached.
I'll move. I'll second.
All in favor? Mileage allowance also attached. That's federal government agreement.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor? 2025, attendance at training. That's also attached. Questions on that? Basically, that's a.
Sub move. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rules of procedure attached. Any questions on those?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Game of next organization meeting. The next organizational meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. That's all paid with everybody.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor? Okay, that brings us down to regular board meeting. Here we go. Have approval of minutes of August 19th, regular board meeting.
There's no corrections. I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our August 31st special meeting for intermunicipal agreement between us and the hospital. Anything to approve that one?
Sub move. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, approval of vouchers.
Yes. Vouchers that have been offered and we recommend general fund vouchers in the amount of $136,050.97. The water, $155,258.75 for the footnote, close to $50 of that tax to the V River School District. Sewer, $116,753.48. And the capital, $1,202,744.46, which have all been offered and I make motion for summary payment.
I'll second. Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Bring us down unfinished business. Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project. What dates for us on that?
Yeah, so utility work is continuing on Cherry Avenue right now. Most of the water and sanitary utilities are in. Highway is still on a good pace to complete all the utility work this year. Cherry Avenue, parking avenue, excuse me, Cherry Avenue and Park Avenue are both scheduled to receive top course pavement this week. And Joe, I just also wanted to touch on that sewer ban there. So the sewer ban needs to be taken out basically because of EFC's dragging their feet on the sewer lawn portion of it, but Guymo and Municipal Solutions have been working with EFC and they should have that figured out soon. So even though it's banned being taken out, it should be able to be paid back fairly quickly. So, yeah, do you guys have any questions on any of that stuff?
No, no.
Okay. That's all I have for questions, huh?
Did you have anything on the ice shoes you wanted to come up there? I asked you to compute all the bad protocols. Although I had a good one the other night.
Good.
Guy calls, says he got in the water. So we get down there. Island that comes up, open up the street, thinking that maybe there was a problem with her valve. Turns out it was a problem with the guy's house valve inside his house. Had nothing to do with the water going. But things happen, I guess. Phase two wastewater upgrades.
Yeah, I'm going to let Jeff speak a little bit on that right now.
Yeah, so we're looking to see everybody in some places in here. So everybody recalls that the phase two improvements are a much scaled back version of what we were originally looking at three plus years ago. Essentially, we have major components of the project. They're lining lagoons, replacing existing blowers, replacing existing chemical system, adding distribution, speeding speed improvement, upgrading the skater system, and miscellaneous site improvements. Essentially, we're working through the drawings, site drawings, and ability component drawings at the moment. We had our site kickoff meeting. Joe, you were present for that on August 27th. Right now, our schedule is to submit to DUC and EFC for shooting for end of October at this point for review. Kev, did you want to talk about the site plan approval process that you may not hopefully go through?
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys recall for Five Streets, going through the site plan approval process for that pump station building. We were trying to find a way to not have to go to planning board and Joe Russell had drafted off this email, this letter here, Joe. This is for the Five Streets one, that it's a nine-step system that the village can go through, nine-question system, I should say, that would allow the circumvent going to the planning board. And I think that it would be something that we could pursue for this project. I just remember last time that the code officer, Ward Daley, had an issue with us using that method there and wanted to see us go through site plan approval. But I think this project is a little different than the Five Streets one in the fact that there's already a wastewater complaint there. And so the site plan process is a lot different than when we went through the Five Streets, so.
I don't believe we had to do anything different. We did the phase one down there a couple of years ago.
We did go through.
You didn't have to do zoning, did you?
We did go through site plan process with the planning board at the time. It was some of our training process that I think Tom Campa wanted us to do with that planning board to see them follow or help us see them follow the proper protocol. So it was kind of a courtesy, but we did it then. So we did kind of do it for, and that was for phases one into we went through. And we did a full environmental assessment form for that as well, so.
I have a question. If we do do the nine steps that you're telling Russell, since he has no problem with, Joe's not here, but my question becomes, can it withstand or is there a chance of a legal challenge?
There probably is always that chance and even maybe before that, Danny, do we just want to go head to head with Ward Daley like we did last time?
Well, considering that being such being he's part of our code, would have heard of him and Mr. Russell, Mr. Russell, came to the agreement when we go about this so that we don't, I better see him work on it ahead of time than have a challenge afterwards. And do we need to have anything approved tonight that we can hold off and have those two entities discuss it and come to a consensus?
Yeah, we agree. We talked on the way up and that was what we said, Mike, can we try to talk this out beforehand? So, yeah, there's nothing that the board needs to approve tonight.
I just need to get all the board and this stuff.
Yeah, I think what I'm going to have Joe Russell do is I'm going to have him update that letter there to be, have to do with that, the wastewater project now. And then have him give it an update to Ward Daley to see what the process is we can do for some.
Right, because the footprint of the whole project really isn't changing from what's there right now.
That's correct.
Right. Right.
Yeah, you could consider a lot of the improvements, maintenance and replacement.
Right.
And then the disinfection being mandated to do by the DUC, so.
Yep.
You're, it's good practice, I guess, and nothing really changing in terms of the use of the site.
One thing that helps when everybody's involved, they don't feel threatened or, that's not going to work, but.
Yep.
Fine, yep.
Agreed. So we'll, I'll just say we'll coordinate with Joe and Ward to get all parties involved. We have to facilitate a meeting. We'll do that.
And I think at the same time, at the next meeting, we're going to also want to do secret for the project as well. So you guys will be the lead agency for that.
So we'll talk with Joe. Last time we did a long AAF, I'm not sure if that's going to be needed this time. So whatever we need to do, we'll do it and have that for the board next month. And then I think that would follow, or bond resolution would follow that. In this case, it's going down. It's easier so, we did the bond resolution before for. Eight, twenty? Twenty, maybe it was. It was twenty because we had phase one, twenty million, so it was a lot less this time.
I only got one question. That's for Jeff.
Yeah.
When we did phase one, you were on top of things and it went through real smooth. On phase two, you were going to be on top of things or you're going to be up here or somebody else?
In terms of inspection?
Yeah, no, you were up here pretty much every other day checking on things.
Yeah, I'll be involved through the whole process.
Because it went pretty smooth when you were keeping an eye on them.
I was cold too, so they couldn't, they couldn't fly too many corners. It was too cold to do such stuff.
Not one, okay. I like that. Anything else on wastewater? Any questions from the board?
Kevin talked about it earlier. I don't know if Joe was there. We had suggested that you form a committee so we could have workshop sessions. I don't know if that happened. Maybe that's a question for Joe with the municipal board.
They did.
They did?
I thought he was going to.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think they had any meetings set up or anything like that, but they decided who was going to be on the committee.
Okay, good. The next thing I wanted to do with Joe and whoever else wanted to go was, you know, the major operator of this project, this infection, is to go see one. And I mentioned that in our kickoff meeting and that's probably our next thing to do is go do that before the weather gets to the point where we can maybe. So I'll try and set that up with Joe there. Their closest place is Cortland, which isn't too bad.
Is that it? Watson Water Agreements. Please announce that they've, I mean, they're all signed. We have our copies. Watson got their copies. We can take that off our tab. Groundwater well and well that project, I think that's going pretty good. The gentleman controls that.
Yeah, so Fry completed the installation of the temporary 18-inch casing for both of the wells. Jay Billings was able to take samples, testing, and everything came out very favorable. So should be full steam. I'd have to be able to install both wells in both of the close locations. So Fry should be back within the next couple of weeks or so to finish that work up. I do have the two no-cost change orders to the board to approve tonight as well. One of them for the removal of the temporary 24-inch casing. The other one is just to switch out the cement grout with the cement grout.
Does anybody have any questions about change orders, the lifeless stuff? I mean, I think the email pretty much explains. The different setup.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll make the motion with, we approve change order number two.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
For change order number three, a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor? Cut. Water supply investigation. Basically, that's on the property that we were interested in earlier in the year. I believe all the responsible parties have met. Jay Billings, do you want to elaborate on that?
Uh, yeah, Joe's there. Was up there with Jay Billings. They were looking at a few spots and initially they think that the spot that they're, that we might want to purchase could be a well-developed area.
And I know I talked with Joe and today and he said basically what we're going to do is get the municipal board members on the original committee and get the committee back and go over the last proposal, but the other thing, Jay Billings was going to give Joe an estimate for doing test wells. And Joe kind of wanted to have that estimate before we set up our committee meeting. And we'll go from there. That's about all we have on that. LED street lighting conversion. This thing's been a zoo, especially since COVID-19. First National Grid comes back with Dublin Price for buyout, plus the price has gone up from the New York Power Authority. Found out just the other week, originally we said we wanted to purchase our lights. We'd asked for the purchase agreement, which they sent us. We sent it back to them for some changes and everything was on hold. Nobody was working because of COVID-19. Turns out National Grid, basically because they redid the pricing schedule for everybody, they did away with that original agreement. So if we want to buy our streetlights from National Grid, we got to go ahead and send out another letter requesting. But do you want to elaborate on everything that was coming?
Well, we met. When was it? We met last week, right?
Yep.
With NIPA and Mickey Edgits from the San Joe Commission. Basically, the cost of purchasing them went up, like Joe said, quite a bit, which affected the payback and the cost to the village. So I don't think we are even looking at the simple payback option, which is buying everything ourselves. We're looking at the financing option. So the financing option changed basically from almost nine years, eight point something to 10.25. Actually, I left my paper out there. So, but the cost didn't really change for the village. Actually, the savings for the village is about the same too, correct, Joe?
Yeah, yes. Just going to take longer to get it.
Yeah, it's just going to take longer to get it. It will be a savings every year, but, and about the same savings, but it'll take 10.27 years instead of eight point whatever. I talked with Mickey the other day on the phone and he said that the town of Marksburg, the, yeah, the town of Marksburg actually, I guess there's quite a few variables in the payback. What type of lights you have and, you know, it makes a big difference if you have a lot of decorative lights or whatever. He said the town of Marksburg is making out the best. The village of Alba was actually close behind them in second. This fires payback and money savings for this whole project. Some of these are actually out 20 years. Some of these municipalities are out 20 years on payback. So we're really not too bad a shake. I still think it's a good purchase for the village. Especially after 10 years because then we're, the loan is paid off. There's no upfront cost to the village at all. So there's no down payment, no, you know. And I think Joe agrees with that, right, Joe?
Some lot. I got, I got some.
I guess my.
Just walking through.
I guess my question, Tim and our Joe, is based on that 10.25 payback and the work that you've done, do you feel that's liberal, conservative, or right on the money? I, I know that's probably enough your question.
It's like he said, you know, it was like an unbelievable deal at first, but then I could more change all the pricing and the paybacks, which actually almost doubled our, right, Joe?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we went from $29,000 to.
Actually, almost.
Sixty, almost sixty, thousand, four hundred and sixty-two.
Yeah, so it's pretty much.
What caused them to change them? Just because they wanted to?
They changed everybody.
They changed everybody.
They went to the Public Service Commission and I guess they claimed their original cost, their depreciation, everything was off, so we did their calculation.
So that week's time, are they going to say it's off again?
I don't know. Like right now, if you went with 10.29, is what they're saying, for years, which is like ten and a half years for payback. With the financing and everything, it's going to cost the village $582,582.17. Our debt service would be looks like around $49,000 a year. Till it's paid off.
Two thousand, seven hundred and forty-three.
Yeah. The other thing though, we got also that's separate from this. National Grid wants a disconnect security device on each pole. Then you have to do a bond and that bond would be another $180,000 and change on top of the $500 name. In this project, those security devices are going to both be attached when they do the, redo the lighting. So we would end up getting that $180,000 back, but we have to put a bond up for that.
Which is no.
So basically what that's for is if we didn't put the disconnect devices in, then National Grid would come through. Basically, we're also going to be paying $7.20 a pole per lease, each pole to National Grid every year. Right now, the estimated, to New York Power Authority, they're supposed to be the ones taking care of the maintenance. Right now, it's estimated at $20 a pole. I think our overall, overall and estimated maintenance is a little over $10,000 a year through New York Power Authority.
That's all figured into that bottom line cost though, right? That's all figured into that bottom line cost, though, right? On the bottom, on the part where the financial payback, that's all figured into that on the bottom.
Everything except the bond, the bond's about.
Yeah, except the bond.
National Grid wouldn't convert the lights to LED. Basically, what they want to convert the lights to LED is a little over $18,000. And you'd end up with a, like, certain incentive, when you got all done, of 20,605. The only thing with National Grid, you wouldn't own the lights, you'd still be leasing. And you'd be paying a little bit higher, what they call, facility speed because of the new lighting fixture. But your power usage is just gonna be down, so kind of offsets that increased speed. This one to New York Power Authority also included five additional streetlights that we asked to be put in the village. National Grid would put additional streetlights in force, but that would be an additional cost on top of that 18,000. My only concern is, right now, with the water project that we're trying to finish up with the wells up there, we just talked about the sewer project. And part of that, like Jeff said, DVC's mandating we have certain things done by June of 2021. And with everything that's going on in the state right now, I know the county's looking at possibly 20% cut on all their major programs and like, off the agents, social services, different stuff like that. I just don't want the village to get themselves in too deep. I just wanna get some nice program, I agree, but we really don't wanna go there right now. With all the uncertainties. Like, right now, unemployment's in Lewis County, I think, right now, last year ago at this time, it was 4.5. This year, it's 7.3. It's actually paying down because a month ago, it was 9. something. Thing is, with this utility, like, all that's gotta come out of the general fund. There's no, like, with water and sewer, at least we got revenue coming in from water usage, sewer usage, but this, we get no revenue that'll pay for it. That's one the board to be aware of.
Is there, is there any time constraints? Or is it, we can pretty much do this at will, whenever we want?
With, with New York Power Authority, it's pretty, probably gotta go down. National Grid, you can do it anytime you want. The only thing that might change, I would think, with National Grid, even New York Power Authority, right now, both are saying that, I'm sure, we're looking at roughly $20,000, you know, basically a rebate check once the project's done, no matter who did it, National Grid or New York Power Authority. That could end up going away down the road. That's our first call, first serve, versus when one's gone, that's it.
Would it really be nice? I think the village is maybe poorly, but it does strike down.
Oh, it's gonna be different.
I hear what Joe's saying from the other side of the phone. I don't know. I was trying to agree with Joe that we better be real careful.
Can we afford to do it right now? In November, December, things are looking good.
What's your thoughts, Neil?
Well, I'm just looking 10-year dumb drill, because that's what the savings really is, that. And they're projecting us savings overall, right now, about $3,800 a year, which isn't a lot, you know what I mean? It isn't much. But when you take away that 29,000, then it's $50,000 a year. And that makes a big difference.
So my, my question is, are we waiting here? What if it's been going on?
These lights are guaranteed or warranted for 10 years. But their expected lifespan is 20 or more. You know, how many of these lights are, sure, they're even hard to fail themselves.
And their plan, when they, I mean, they got, in your spreadsheet, they got contingency monies and stuff in here, but basically with all that amounts to, if they're at a power pole, and they're changing out the fixture and wiring going down through the arm is, is not good. Their plan is to upgrade all that wiring at the same time they're upgrading the light. So it's pretty much what's they allow.
And interest rate, they're proposing at 4%, but they're pretty positive it's gonna be a lot less than that.
If we're talking maybe January, then might be about 2 or 2.5% fixed rate.
So that would make a big difference too, you know? That's not guaranteed either.
Is this something the board for, something they wanna move forward or not? We're trying to get them open.
Does the decision have to be made on that tonight?
What's that term?
Does the decision have to be made on that tonight? I mean, you're only about a month away from the next meeting, for more discussion or whatever.
Not that long.
Well, that's a fair question. I guess I would go further on that question, apparently, or wait? Or three months?
I don't think you wait, I don't think you wait through three.
No, they're, uh...
We're at what they call 90% design right now, so in other words, they're, they're at their next step for design. So once you get to 100% design, that's when you're...
They're really starting to pop up.
Yeah, I'd say. But I think they were expecting maybe a decision tonight. Would it require, or would it be smarter to have a special meeting if we had to have it within the next couple of weeks? The way this project's been going, it's been carrying on forever anyway. We don't even have, like you said, we gotta send another form for a buyback, so.
Who's committed so far?
I think there's two.
Town of Champion.
Town of Champion and there's another one.
No, I'll take that back. Town of Champion, I think it was pulled out.
They're the ones that pulled out and, uh...
How are you involved?
Village West Traffic or something, there's 10:50.
So they're all hesitant, like Joe's indicating right now. They're all hesitant, like Joe's indicating right now.
Well, they're all just getting, like, we just had the meeting last weekend, it's 90% design, so they haven't had meetings with all of them yet. I think their last meeting is like next week sometime.
I'd really like to see it happen, because I...
I would too.
In the Village of West Garth, which in the town of Wilma, have approved, they're moving forward, Town of Champion opted out. That's, in this area, that's...
I think the ones that had actually less lights, why they found their own payback, you know what I mean?
But the other problem is trying to get meetings and everybody together, like with New York Power Authority. They're still not allowing their people to have meetings like we are, they can still have it, they're still working from home. They're a little tough working from home.
I'm talking to the table and having a special meeting, that's all. He thinks he's got it, I'll do some more advanced research and look at that later. Mickey's kinda hired to tie it out, sort of. Well, if we do that, we'll look into the village finances a little bit more and just see what...
You wanna pick a couple of board members to work with you?
Yeah, sure, you do.
I mean, other than Mickey. That's, so they...
Anything else going on up there?
Yeah, I think, yeah, fucking plug in those numbers and I think we'll be able to potentially budget or whatever in that.
So you volunteer?
Yeah. I'm agreeing.
Okay.
So me and Charlie have worked on, how's that? We don't need only two of them.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
I guess the other thing you could look at here possible is, we're paying, I think it'd be 58, 60,000 a year for National Grid, so we could stay under that.
Yeah, we are staying under that.
It might be all right.
It's under that 49,000, so that's what your 3,800 dollars savings is. I don't know, but I actually, when I talked to Mickey the other night, he had this spreadsheet, did you see that? That he sent out an email there, but it was, it wasn't awesome.
Spreadsheet guide?
Yeah, but there's a sample thing there, and they had numbers in it, some in this valley, I don't even know where it was. And I asked him if I could get that spreadsheet in blank form that I filled it out, actually. I didn't get it. And then when I actually sit right down and look at the numbers.
Yeah, that's his spreadsheet right there.
Yeah, I think that is it. Maybe it would be best if we produced something like that specific to the village and then review it like that.
Sounds familiar. Any other questions on that, before we go on? NICE Act Crossroads. Senator Griffl's office, as of the 17th, this is an answer I had back from them. This is mayor, I just sent another email to my contact yesterday on this, but the bottom line is, no, nothing yet, definite. They are very well aware of what we're asking on the village's behalf. As soon as I hear something, believe me, I'll let you know. This is from Griffl's office, on the 17th. I talked to Joe Russell today and he claims he contacted each person at Public Service Commission, and that person's supposed to be getting in touch with the NICE attorneys and trying to find out what's going on and get back to Joe and, or to Joe, you know, that person hasn't got contacted yet. So that's kinda where that is. Truck complaint on Cascade and Stole, somebody had a, they did go in there and cut the corner back, and everybody went through there and saw what it looked like.
It's definitely better.
I'm sorry.
Definitely better.
I can't go back any farther on the Silk Street side until we put that made there.
I'm sorry?
On the, on the Silk Street side, I can't go back any further because of that jack we put up. And that's where you asked for it to go back to, that's where I cut it to.
I know Ward sent an email to me a month ago, the village was, was all right with it, the way it is now. And I told them I thought we were, the only thing I talked, talked to them was just gonna maybe go down on the, got so they could trim the trees, you know, for...
And I just received an email.
Adjust the tops and the sides, so they were off the side, go off and on down.
I have a message just now from my newspaper at 4:43 that says he will be in Lawton next week. Take care of that.
And Ward told me he was coming over to talk to the courts today. So kinda the way he talked, uh, we were all right with it. We felt that what they were doing, they were not being compliant, then it was just up to the attorneys to try and get the justice called out of court.
Here's my thought. If Ward's happy, we employ him as coach, then, then it's a combination. I don't think that he's gotta ask us if we're happy. He's coach, he's happy. That's all that matters, he's coach.
Yeah, I don't wanna become the, I mean, I know that there's an issue there, but I do not wanna become the subbies.
No, and I, we're lack of, that's what we pay them for ourselves. If Ward's happy, that is a, that is a...
Basically, what Ward's saying to me is that it appears that they're compliant now. We want to know myself that the other board members, have any other... Are you concerned? He's okay with it.
He's okay with it?
And he was gonna, he told me he was gonna stop in at the courts and hopefully get things to the different attorneys or, and get court of justice. We can dismiss. He also told me, which I haven't received yet, found a thing in the zoning, I believe it's more on the county side than the village, but deals with like intersections that he thinks we should take a look at and possibly amend that section of the land zone and, and add that, and kinda like when we amended the junkyard when you're on that. So things are more compliant. I have not received that from him yet, but he was on the road when he was talking to me the other day, so probably haven't had a chance to back to the office and send, he's gonna send me a copy. But all the, the village, we're all, we're okay with that one. All right. Anybody else have any unfinished business before we go on?
Yeah, Joe, I just wanted to circle back a little bit, um, talk about the water sewer rates a little bit. A few are calling back in April of 2020, bumped up the water sewer rates 5% each. And on the sewer side, we were gonna continually doing 5% increases every six months or so. And I, I talked with Pam a little bit and covering the time again where we're gonna need to do another 5% increase to have it onto the November, November cycle, is that right, Pam?
Well, there is one going to affect this November.
But we, we would have to have it pass before November 1st with another 5% sewer or May.
I talked, I talked with Joe this afternoon on that, from the municipal board. He was under the impression that both water and the sewer were gonna do 5% every year.
It's not needed on the water side, it was just in the sewer side.
Problem is, we met with Kraft already, we don't meet with them again until February.
Okay.
His thought right now was, no, it wasn't gonna be another 5% right on top of the last compliance, or, or year from now.
Who's thought, was that Joe, Joe, Joe Zera's or Kraft?
Joe Zera's, so.
Because Kraft was part of the negotiation, they, I mean, I'm pretty sure they were...
And it's in the contract with Kraft that we meet with him every, tail end of February 1st part of March. And Joe, Paul, and myself met with him on this last 5% water and sewer increase that's coming on there.
I would suggest, Kevin, that maybe the next municipal board meeting, that if you would mind, pull a little slide with your spreadsheets for the municipal board.
I can do that, yeah.
Because I know we did originally talk that the sewer would have to increase
Yeah.
more.
Yeah, I'm actually, I, indeed, to get to around 20% from that original number, so we're gonna do it gradually in six months, six-month increments. But, yeah, I can, I can definitely call my municipal board and update them on that.
See, I'm all on that one myself, because I felt like we were going to yearly, a lot of the water. There's a water necessary, we're gonna have to watch, sewer, I know, sewer is the one.
Yeah, the water one is a good standing after that 5% increase, but the sewer one's definitely gonna need more increase as, as we go forward with the, with the Wayfarer and my projects.
Anybody else have anything?
So when is the next municipal board meeting?
Uh, it'll be the 13th.
And so with, with their approval, will we be able to have the rates increased at the next public board meeting, or?
When there's, if they recommend to the board that we would vote out.
Was there any...
In our meeting would be very next.
There would have to be a public hearing.
No.
So it'll be totally random, right?
No, we, we would actually have to schedule a public hearing for our public meeting.
Well, we can do that with the idea that we may not raise it at all, we can schedule a public hearing, flexible, it's on the agenda, we can do it.
I would assume we could do that, Sean.
I'll make the motion that we schedule a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing and asking... I'll make the motion that we schedule a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing and possibly raising the sewer rate with our next main bill.
I, I don't have a problem with that, Danny, in theory, but I guess the phrase possibly, do we have to have a specific reason for a public hearing? I don't know.
Yeah, cause you're raising the water, anytime you're raising water sewer, you're gonna have to.
Right, but we don't know if we are or not.
But the problem is, where's Dan's coming from?
Well, I get it.
We're set on a certain date, if it's not done by that date, then.
No, I, I understand that.
We're saying that we're not gonna raise it more than, I would think that would be a legitimate.
Why's your setup?
We're not gonna raise it more than five percent, but we may not raise it at all.
Oh, I get that, I just, sorry for getting in the semantics.
No, I, I don't mean semantics, it's a, it's a possibility. Well, alright, I'll, I'll change the motion. We'll, we'll schedule a public hearing for our next meeting to raise the water rates five percent. That doesn't mean we have to do it.
Sewer, sewer.
Sewer, sewer, I'm sorry.
So I, I, I agree with you guys, cause I was at that specific meeting, and I thought that we said that the water was gonna go up five percent. And then every six months, the sewer was gonna go up five percent, till we got up to twenty percent, and then, I don't remember what meeting it was, but I remember, I think it was the municipal board meeting or something.
We may have done a special meeting even with, with homeowners for both the boards, but yeah.
You both were there.
Yeah, that was back in January, February, I believe.
My motion covers, protects us that way, so I'll, I'll make that motion.
I sort of thought that you guys had already talked to Craft and told him that it may go up again, the sewer, or not, am I wrong in that?
I, I know we talked to him, basically what Craft wants to know is, they wanna know in advance. Because they have their budgets and everything, and I'm not sure if we told them every six months, or if it was gonna be a year, I'd have to look at that. It would still be alright, cause I wouldn't, if we could raise it, the passive wouldn't go in touch with the name, right? So we still have time to talk to Craft.
What's their budget here?
Calm.
I think it's Calm, if I remember, he doesn't tell us. Okay, that's the other question.
Can you kind of answer this question, Kevin, but the difference, the reason for the, need for the sewer is the, is the upgrades.
Yep, yes, yep. Yeah, the reason why we're doing it now is so we can build up instead of doing a big one out of one, so.
I, I, I'm like Tim, I remember the, the issue, the specifics on that.
Is the possible meeting with Craft, we're going to that, or not? Oh, probably, I'm sure, maybe on me. Usually we get Brian to call us, it's pretty easy to get that.
Just to give him the heads up, saying this is what we're doing.
Cause last I was Brian, the plant manager, and Paul, and Joe, and myself just sat down with them for a few minutes and table it out. Not like we gotta bring corporate or anything else. Okay, we have a second to Dan's motion, though?
I'll second it.
All favor? A new business, Craft's surcharge is for the month of July was eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Go ahead and go, you can build that.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Joe, what was it for, I don't feel like asking.
What's that, Joe?
What was the surcharge for, is it flow or D O B or?
That's for Craft, that's on the sewer side, you know, they go.
It's flow and D O B.
Yeah, that's the first one I had in a while, right?
Yeah, well, second. Okay, the next item, hopefully everybody's gonna copy, adoption resolution was coming, hazard mitigation plan. Plan made over ten years and so, and, uh, actually we started this last fall, the village sees their section. Paul and I worked on it, we went and reached down in Glenfield, and they went over it again, and they finally got it around to been officially adopted, now we have to officially adopt it. And if anybody wants to see it, so just tap me in the office, the whole client, not just filling this part.
I'll make the motion with that.
I'll second that one.
All favor? Resolution twenty twenty, J D Cat, basically this is a grant through the court system. Usually we go in every year with the town, and this year we're going in with the town, and what we look after is the village courts and the town courts. Uh, basically it's, uh, records management, new files, and to help, uh, banks and records. Basically, this is just a resolution to say that we're back, that the town is actually submitting the grant this year, usually the village has, but the town's gonna do it this year. Because we're, uh, behind the town board on this grant. Basically, it'll be, if we get the grant, it's money to, hopefully there'd be enough money to buy two new filing systems, similar to what we have in the office, one for the village courts and one for the town courts. And the town has already agreed to clean out the little building over there to let the village have it, and be able to put this new filing system in. And they're planning on using that building right behind Chef, to their, to their room. We just need a motion to pass that and send it on to the town.
I'll make that one.
I'll second. All favor? Okay, this brings us down to the twenty twenty-one property tax exemption questionnaire, we do it every year at this time. Everything's pretty much the same as the years, although we do have section in there on solar and wind. The village of Lawville is granting solar exemptions. We wanna get out of that. We have to do what they call, but you have a copy, hopefully. What they call a local law, the year popping out of real property tax law, section four eighty-seven. Basically, this is a law that I researched a little bit, just typed it up. The village, if we decide to opt out, I talked with Joe Russell, he said he would go over it, make sure anything needs changing, he would get it changed, so everything is proper. But my thought on this was more and more solars coming into our village. I know we don't have a lot of land around this, but I know a few pieces of property that could easily be used. And, uh, we're gonna be losing, there's a solar farm that the county has up there, at Public Safety Mill, that will become a tax exempt next year. We can't do anything about that one, cause that one's grandfathered, but we're gonna lose quite a couple of cash money off of that one when it does come tax exempt next year. We can have a couple, basically the county makes this whole every year on that. I'm just saying, if somebody comes in decides to put up a big solar farm, or if somebody decides to put a whole bunch of solar in, or on a plot route. Then this is gonna be losing. But it's up to you guys if you're gonna opt out or not. To opt out, we have to do a local law, we have to do a public hearing, not necessarily a local law, just like any other local law. And this is just a sample that I put together, like I say, that Joe Russell said he would make it all.
This is just for the wind towers, isn't it?
This is for solar and wind in the village around, just in the village.
Solar, wind, and solar, solar.
Actually, I added, Joe may take it out if we pass it, he looks at it, but I'm just thinking, big business, there's a lot of things I can, so I added in here, uh, different types of generating systems that some places may tax it up, but we'll.
I do, Joe. I mean, it's valued to, without the owner or what have you, and if they put it on vacant land, and we now have, we can't use for that's generating revenue, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot. So I, I am hard to agree that we should have a public hearing and draft a law that can protect us that way, be it what you've drawn up, or, or a modification of such.
Well, this is just generally what they, I did this so you have an idea of generally what the opt-out law is, but, like I, I talked with Joe, and I would want, and find too.
Do we have to have a public hearing within a set period of time, does it need to happen next month?
It can happen next month.
Do we need more time than a month, or don't you have more time than a month? That's my question.
As far as the village goes, according to Aaron Cotts, uh, we gotta have this paperwork that here.
Number thirteen.
Yeah, to the tax people, though. Aaron says, uh, we can, we have to, we can adopt that local law even after that. It's not gonna affect the village anyway, cause we're always a year behind, so this won't even take place until, uh, twenty twenty-one taxes. So that's the only change that I'm suggesting, but it's up to the board, but.
The bottom of the paper says so, that your local law should be finalized by November first, right?
Interesting.
Says that your local law is to be finalized by November first?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's not what Aaron told me about, okay, yeah, I don't know what the back office calls it. So you'd have, pretty much have to do your, uh, public hearing in October, the next meeting. Joe said he would, if we did it, he'd ever, he'd write it, so.
We'll make the motion, let me get it. A public hearing, opt-out, and local tax, and all, then a meeting on October twenty-first.
I'll second. All favor? Alright. Well, that's the public hearing, but we, uh, probably need to do a motion also to change this twenty twenty-one exemption questionnaire, opt out of that solar contract.
We could do it at the next meeting, at the same time, right?
Well, if we do that, Joe, are we going to take away the exemptions that are on that? That we allow the tax, I think, to see?
No, we're still gonna law all the, the only exemption you're gonna disallow, if you look down, it's from the top, reading down, this column right here, be this piece right here.
Okay.
No, the senior citizens, the all last, fire department, that's, they're all gonna stay the same. We also need to do a resolution, we don't have one, but I believe in order to charge and return check fee, we have to have it. And that's what, uh, this resolution return check fee is all about. Do you have any questions on that? Isn't that one of his fans, we can't charge the check fee unless we have another little? And we have, believe it or not, well, the courts got one back.
Yeah, the court had one that bounced.
Why didn't you say that something needed to be? I'll make the motion. Okay, I believe, uh, any other questions on that? This gotta be real global, I believe, but.
It doesn't have to be, it's just the way they type it out, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Alright. A poll? General on, uh, budgets and, anybody have any questions on that, Ralph, we need a motion to, let Pam go in and get some cut there.
I got a motion.
I'll second. All favor?
Alright.
Alright. The next item is a disposition listing, basically it's, uh, on one side it's all village stuff, on the other side it's, uh, court stuff in there, also authorized to dispose of that, a shredder. I'll second. You made a motion on that?
I did.
Head second up? Okay, all in favor? Equipment auction, I think it's going okay, but I don't think they got that.
Um, right now we have the eighty-two snowboard, the ninety-nine New Holland Skid Steer, two thousand nine three fifty X L, no? And the two thousand ten F three fifty X L pickup of plow. Um, the actual auction's gonna end on Monday, and, uh, if it's okay for the, the current bids are, I, I believe are, um, okay. Um, I guess, yeah, and I thought today, to see it, when the auction's over on Monday, either we could call each port member to see if they're okay with the amount that the auction ends up, or you could just, to see if you could agree with the authority to say they're okay. So we can move forward with them.
Any of you wanna see how they talk, and say just, go to W W dot auctions international, go to their homepage, click up on the top, punch in our zip code, and drop down. It's what I asked you, when, when you wanna see everything, municipal stuff, you wanna click on the municipal, and then go to the all, and then, we're about halfway down that page, and you just click on it.
Well, I can give you a little update, the two thousand ten F three fifty with ninety thousand miles on it, the plow, the current bid right now is fifty-nine hundred. The two thousand nine, uh, Rusty Dunk is at thirty-one fifty, the New Holland Skid Steer is at eight thousand two hundred, and eighty-two snowboard is at sixteen hundred.
And the snowboarders.
What, what bidding was that, Mark?
My mate.
At what time?
At maybe, like, seven, probably, six fifty maybe, uh, six fifty. They're like, a minute, there's like, minute or two, actually, six fifty.
Sure, so I'm here to make my motion, okay, so like you said, I make a motion that you have to adopt. You can't sign out so fast, so obviously it's gonna be at least that much, I make a motion that, uh, we award each piece of equipment in the high bidder based on the time, and then, uh, I'll get, uh, that light for the day.
I'll second. All favor?
Alright.
Cause usually that happens sometimes in these auctions, the last half hour, half hour, see it much before I was watching more of the auctions, that's when we get into a.
You back, yeah.
And once these four auctions are over, I will have.
And once these four auctions are over, I will have seven more lots to go on the auction. Um, it won't be vehicles. Um, we had talked about it at a previous board meeting, the miscellaneous stuff that we have down in the garage. So, once this auction's over, Dave and I will get together and get all those out there. Right hand. Plus, it's twenty-one years old. The little skid steer is twenty-one years old, but it's in excellent shape.
That's what we're looking for.
All right, before we go into correspondence, uh, Ed, you sent the email to the board on the place, or on the opt-out down the level?
Well, we had a double point meeting, um, it was earlier in the month, a couple weeks ago. Um, they, they opened up, obviously. Uh, they're following the protocols, guidelines and whatnot. The one thing that they have lost is the St. Peters Gym, so the idea that Mr. Myers brought up was to use, uh, the park for outdoor, uh, things like soccer, play football, that sort of thing. I'm not exactly sure what his game plan is for what we'd be using it for, but, uh, that's what was mentioned. Um, so I just brought up the fact that we, uh, did reject somebody using it last month, and that it should be brought to our attention. So, I guess, in talking to you, that perhaps there was some talk with the fair board, or I guess...
I just, I just got off the phone with Doug Damm.
With Doug, okay.
Um, basically, Dan came to him to ask him about using the football field, which...
Oh, okay.
Right now, it's under contract with the school.
School, yeah, so you just say that, and all of it.
So Dan has to talk to the school to use it, so...
No, I thought I'm talking to Joe, but it was, you're thinking of like the other types of the fair grounds or whatnot.
Well, I was thinking, well, I was talking with you, the soccer field that's up in the back.
But Dan didn't mention that, too, with Doug. He just mentioned the football field.
I just, you got more space back there, plus, yeah. I also think it's safer because you don't have all the traffic that drives through by the letten part, because a bunch of kids are in there.
Yeah, and the project that's going on at Fair Downs really wouldn't affect it because they, they basically could drive into the lower gate by the bus garage, so...
And like I say, you're right, we just turned the other karate group down.
I think there's some, I just wanna make him aware of, and maybe others use it without the permission, but there's a way to go about it. Uh, I, again, I'm not sure, obviously, there's gonna be small groups, whatever is allowed by, I mean, we're working through public house and things like that, so it's not gonna be, you know, a hundred kids, you know, milling around or whatnot. So, uh, do we wanna just get back to, what's the last conversation you said we had with Doug Damm, or was, uh...
Just a few minutes ago, and he, he had talked to Dan and told Dan that he needed to contact school.
Okay.
In order to use a football field.
Yeah.
But I think if he wanted to use, you know, fair board member, if they wanted to use other parts of it, would be fine with me.
Okay. Because then you've got that, well, whatever, the auxiliary field that they use for soccer, the track, that's where you would use that.
That's where, and so it is and all that.
Okay.
All right, moving on to correspondence, uh, Environmental Consolidate Corporation, basically, you know, what they, well, they've approved of a change order. Anybody have any questions on that? That's who we got Kevin on, we're gonna answer them all. It's pretty caught dry, and Paul and I are down over with Kevin. We'd be more than, we have to see.
Need a washing, right, Joe?
What's that?
You need a washing or food, then?
No, no, it's just, I just was waiting to see if anybody had a chance to look it through and any questions. But the next item is, uh, thank our governor for this. He's already got the police department working hard over there, uh, the rules and regulations. Matter of fact, what'd you get Randy with, a hundred eighty-seven page booklet?
One, uh, yeah, I started reading that.
Well, Randy fell in his group, and I think looking at it, overseeing, looks kinda happened before April twenty twenty-one. But now, the governor wants us to have pandemic operations planned, basically, for the village, offices, and the DPW, also that'll, I'm sure, include the police department also. And that's basically what he's looking for, and right in this pamphlet that everybody had a couple ago. This has gotta be completed by April first, but we also believe in a hundred and fifty days, we have to, uh, September seventh, we have to, uh, submit to our, basically, a plan to submit to our union representative, that's our, which would basically affect our DPW guys.
Is that kind of, you know, Pam or Joe, a boilerplate type thing that we can use?
At this point, we don't know. So I'm just, we gotta start, uh, putting some stuff together ourselves, and the board will be ready for it. I'm thinking, some of us, we may be able to tap on maybe where our nervous preparedness plan that we already have. Because the first item's not gonna be that hard to do. We've already done some of this. Just gotta be breaking it down how we're gonna actually do it. So I guess what I would suggest is, everybody look this over, talk to different ones, and maybe at the next board meeting, we could put a small committee together and sit down and put it all together, meet the February deadline. Meanwhile, maybe, if you see Dan, Knighton might come over and boil the plate on that.
I think he actually, Wade may already have some good stuff also.
I mean, a lot of it here is like assessment of volume, especially with our DPW, we know it's gotta be, uh, water plant operators or sewer plant operators. And the snow one, it's gotta be pretty much everybody. Anybody any questions on that? But I would like to, uh, because I'd be able to put a committee together next month, so we can sit down with this done. Lewis County IDA, uniformed tax exemption policy, revisions of the countywide solar process. Basically, uh, I know I read the whole thing that they came out on, all the different pages, the different parts of how they, well, basically, uh, deal with like farmer's property, how it's gonna be developed, if it's good land, or land that needs to be drained, or poor soil, look like solar projects on. The other thing was, I think they're looking at possibly twenty-five years for pilot of solar projects. They're looking, uh, for, uh, several percent sales tax while we're building the projects. And I know, uh, as I say, it'd be nice if everybody took a look at it, and you got till Friday to give Brittany Davis at IDA your thoughts. I know a couple of the thoughts I gave her, we discussed this quite a bit, two of my thought were, one, pilots, I thought, were a little bit long for the solar projects, only because of solar panels. I know everything's being built better these days, but they've pretty much got the solar pilot running right through the light expectancy of the panels, and I think it should be shorter in itself. Sales tax, if they wanna give them a break on the sales tax, I'm thinking, maybe we'll fit it percent, but not a full hundred percent. If you look at these solar farms, it's outfits from a way to command and build these solar farms that are in and out, and then, as far as job creation, they might create one or two jobs at the most. A lot of this stuff can be run remotely now, from a guy at a switch station someplace, so it's not like they're creating a bunch of jobs for the county. My thought is, if you got industry coming in here and it's gonna bring in a bunch, say, fifty or seventy-five jobs, that's a different story. You have to give them a little better pilot than somebody else. I mean, that's where you want your tax exempt pilots going up. Those are just a few of my thoughts with Brittany about it. Read the, get a chance, read the thing yourself, be nicer. Somebody else beside myself, get back to work. Anybody got any questions on that?
Yes, Kenny, he goes into what we just discussed earlier, where you didn't talk pilots, but you talked, you know, you wanna forget the pilot tax exemption. But a lot of it, pilots darn near tax exemption a lot of issues. Uh, and so, I have a problem with solar power, but when it takes land, like you said, two tolls, Joe, you can't get tax revenue, number one, and number two, it's not creating any jobs. We just lost land for something we could, so I'm gonna get, personally, I'm gonna get a pilot with you for something like this, based on what you said, one job, two jobs.
Okay, this other thing, so you're just, notice asking, they just have to let us know what their file or the state records are, get their license, this and stuff. Looks like there's gonna be a place to do, to do a break down on the TJ.
TJ's Barbecue Stew. Right across from Get Ready's, basically, that little thing where TJ's Barbecue Stew.
And he used to run one before? Does the same guy run one before it closed up like today?
No. This is Stew Brewing. This is Stew Brewing, that's at Trinidad Ave, that's where this is.
And they closed in the mall?
Yeah, they closed one in the mall. But they're still brewing over here on Trinidad Ave, where these others used to be, they're on the corner there. They had their hose in one time, a new brewery and all that over there, but I don't know if this is something they're gonna do now, or what.
Yeah, this sounds like something that we don't know.
There was a commercial kitchen right in this building, but, uh, TJ's Barbecue.
Is that the building that kept on going?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's got him listed as the owner of that.
The building itself is actually for sale currently.
Is that?
The building itself is actually for sale right now.
Yeah, it is so. The village attorney, he's not here. Something I got is, just to put the board aware of it, the building we sold to, uh, Level Medical Associates, they called me the other week, and I got ahold of Paul, we looked at it, we went down, we talked to Dr. Higginson. What he wants to do is, behind this building, the bank started to grow, they're off the retaining wall back there, and he also thought about bringing it up, Cascade, he thought, we own all of Cascade on the bank there, up there is, probably, we probably, Paul market out, it's a white paint, and only, up there in short ways. And, uh, he seems to think the village, as he calls it, skin in the game because of, he thinks we put that addition on back there years ago and moved the parking lot, which is causing that bank to grow. I did a little research, and, uh, basically, the village didn't even get involved with that, uh, building until, uh, nineteen eighty. All the building and everything that went on down there, Elks bought that area in nineteen forty-seven, and started in nineteen forty-nine, building extensions and repairs. In fifty-seven, they enlarged the rooms, built the bar, the grill, uh, installed the bowling alleys. And then in nineteen sixty-two, they enlarged things again. In nineteen seventy-eight, their membership was getting some large, that's when the pepper mill came out for sale down there, so that's when they bought the pepper mill down there. So the village did, only work the village has ever done on a building, was we revamped the elevator back, but we didn't extend the building or extend the parking lot or anything, so we really don't have any reason to stabilize that paint. It's property owners, and I believe he owns part of it, and then the house down there, and the hill where it owns part of it. And I know he asked me, he said, well, if I bought all the materials, he says, well, the village installed stuff, like, oh, that's what the village can do, work for private individuals, so... Not sure where that's gonna go down the road, although, uh, I did hear from Ward that his engineer went and talked with him, so I think this could take a while. Sounds like retaining wall is considered a permanent structure. Permanent structure's gotta be ten feet from the property line, so this is gonna have to go before the zoning board or anything that happened down there, so... But I just tasted, clearly, on the board heard anything, that's, yes, the board problems, but I don't, really, it wasn't, in the bus, especially the bus. And I told him, he said, well, I've been mowing the bank, and I said, well, the village, we have crew, we'll take over mowing the bank, we're not bothering them, so... But like I said to Paul, on the Cascade side, that's nice grass, sod up through there, it's not a road, so, plus, there's a storm drain on the back, there comes down through, over the banks. Can't be digging too deep to be into that, just in case you hear anything, I don't know what's going on. And the other thing I got is, we wanted to do this where Charlie could be homeless, Charlie Trilliam, he's had over fifteen years service. So after this meeting, I plan to stop and downwind, see him, Charlie, and presenting all of them, by, key to the village. I wish he was here in person. Originally, when we were gonna do this, Dorothy was, was gonna make us pay, we were gonna...
And I wanted to bring that up to the board, I wanted to commend the person who's served, this is, put it for that.
I guess that's all I got tonight. With treasure. Chief of Police.
Second page is just some additional information. First page, probably something over due each month. And the other thing is, the truck that came in is a new beginning, rakers and lights installed. Hopefully, that'll be done, sale into the super for our next week. Soon as that's done, I'll be picking it up, muting, taking it, we get a strike, a letter, and after that, it'll be in service, actually, in service now, but, gonna be ready to go.
What, my question is, what is, what is cheap crystal tax exemption, what's that?
I'll go over that one, too. That page is a little bit more sensitive.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
I appreciate this, Randy, actually, to give the board an idea of what's going on, what's going on in property.
So the first, the first batch, they're all complaining, so. So our supply logs broken down into different categories, two categories, it's easy for the month of August. So that's a few months for the month of August. Then below, you'll explain to the rest, following misdemeanor violations, below that, it'd be a different category. DTP, same thing, and then perfect people all that. There was any ill journey to that, we all have. So that's gonna be a fairly, um, very good one, yes. Again, the second page, that's right over at the bottom of the. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. If that second page is anything you wanna discuss, I'll discuss it with you in executive session, or I'll discuss it with you over my office privately.
That's all I have. Special agenda. Fall cleanup will start October fifth and go through October nineteenth. As Kevin talked about earlier, tomorrow, Trinity Ave will be paved, and they're working on Friday for part bad. That's all I have. Capital future planning.
On the, I don't know if you have this, have you got the schedule for when they go to Bill and bring the boss?
Talking with Mark O'Connor, who's the acting, who's an engineer, as soon as they get done with their ADA sidewalks, that's the reason they haven't done it earlier, because they wanted to put the new serving in, get the sidewalks in before the mill made that first week in September, because technically, we wanted to know.
Earl.
Yeah, I filled her, I'm sorry.
Earl.
Yes.
Why would you do that to them?
Well, they, they had enough money in the budget to spend on streets here in Lavo. So the ADA sidewalks weren't in total compliance, so that's why they're redoing those and putting the repair menu. Basically, the end of this year, we're gonna have to put streets in the village to get.
Or to Boston.
Going in vehicles, pushing it out. Capital future planning, you have?
Uh, I don't know what I have. There's the LED thing, that might be a, well, you're working on. The only thing that we might wanna throw on is just the Nikon thing, well, I mean, we can think about it for another month, and then if that's the committee you wanna put it on, it'd be Miami, but.
First minute. Nothing for it. Plan it.
Uh, I think we've gotta do audits for August.
David, you have this?
That's what I've got, speaking.
Player department, I have nothing. Use department. I have nothing, I'm tender.
What's that?
Anything on use department? I think Randy can do. Name is zoning board?
The only thing with the planning, conference of plan committee is, I think, that's pretty well finalized, we're working on our first meeting.
Municipal board, how is that here? I think we just touched a couple of things that's going on there. Who with a towel?
Uh, just that grant for the storage stuff there, I did attend meetings last week, because I was here for the early meeting, so. That is the only thing the village already.
Tell me.
Yeah, the, I guess, I think a lot of people in the general public may not understand the municipal, intermunicipal agreement that we developed with the Lewis County Hospital last month, and we're getting remunerated at the tune of sixty dollars an hour, and it's getting rate review. The gentleman that Randy's using most of the time up there is very, very well received. I've heard a lot of good comments. The only question was, that's come up more than once to me, is, why are we doing it? And are we getting paid? And I think the answer was, I think, very satisfactory. And when that's happened, I think the people that have asked that question have been putative. So it's working well, and that's, that's good for, for posterations. So far, I've heard positive comments, including Austin, and I've been also up there periodically, but he was one, and so far, it's always pretty good. One fairly significant call came in that was taken here instantly, very quickly. It's close at, or the others that came, complaining about masks, although those can be paid, but on the sheets, the payment beginning, it's gonna show the time, it's gonna be relatively easy to do the billing, when I get ready to turn them over to the team. The CEO also probably lost that raise for meetings, to be able to see what incidents are happening, and minor, they're writing up those reports, they have them doing anything major, whatever, you can report down on them. So yeah, one fairly significant that was taken care of within a half hour, everything's taken care of on that. Everything else has been minor, stuff, claims, mask, or what have you. Everything's been fine. Here's the other situation I have, politically, whether we agree with it or not, right now, it's the law. And I've seen, I think that, I understand employees feel that they wanna have to enforce it because it makes it tough on them. And I know about, and I know that there's a lot of non-compliance. And I'd like to reiterate, and I believe you will hardly agree, we're not gonna look for that problem, but if we get called because somebody is not working with these employees, we will address it. And ask them kindly to do it, and if not, then if there's harassment issue, whatever, you can deal with them based on all that. I'd like our local businesses to know that we will support them. And, but we're not going to harass anybody if they need to feel that they've got somebody to help them. Is that cloud really on, that we're not getting so much anymore, but there's issues, depending on who you talk to, whether it's enforcement, or just all that stuff, but we don't have to go there, there's other routes that we can take. And that's, that's the avenue I've been working at, now telling guys, using judgment. So far, it's been working fine, we haven't had any issues. But there are other avenues you can go to. There's, there's some morning issues where, I'm just gonna tell you that I was here saying that the one story that I had to record more than fifty percent of China aren't wearing masks. And that's not fair to the other stores, because they know that that's where they're gonna go. For the ones that are enforcing the law, like Stewart's, who I think is doing a phenomenal job, are being penalized in riots, because somebody knows they don't have to wear a mask, they're gonna go with the other ones. So, but I'll discuss with you the story that I'm talking about.
Probably nothing new on recreation, is?
The only, that was the only one I was gonna say, and just before we close too, I just kinda wanted to add what Chuck had mentioned too, as far as your recognition for Charlie Trilliam. Usually, we, we have a meeting, the meeting would be the last one, and then, you know, obviously, he took over before the first of the month or whatnot. A while ago, I tried to figure out how this all happened, but I, Danny and I were on the board once before, and after that, at one time, we had, I think there was a resignation of the mayor, then resignation of a board member to take another job, and I think in that mix somewhere, Charlie was appointed. I can't quite figure out when that was, or whose place he took, but it doesn't really matter. But in that time, I think what Charlie has done, and he's not somebody that likes the recognition, obviously, but in his own kinda quiet way of just doing his job, he, in my opinion, gave a lot of stability to this village and the board when there were these resignations. I wasn't sure how long he's been, he had been on the board, but fifteen years is quite a accomplishment. So I'd just like to publicly recognize him as well.
Public comment, Henry, you got anything?
No, it all took my time to.
Maybe if you didn't read the stuff, you can't, you can't keep your tongue away.
Thank you.
Have you got ten minutes, Tony?
This is a list of things that I've kinda seen going on in the village, and not pointing any fingers or anything. But I'm gonna start out with the Boswick Street Speedway, particularly after four o'clock and on weekends. And what I see is, they come around the corner, right on red, there's no stopping, they come around the corner, they nail it, whether it's a motorcycle, or pickup truck, or car, and they know where the guys are sitting. They know they're either fairgrounds gate or down by the bus garage, and it's just like popular. Hit the crosswalk by the tennis courts, let off, you see, or you see the brake lights come on, so they come over the hill. Is there any chance, Randy, that they can park in that small parking lot that the school has there? So where they get a shot?
That's another issue, you should come to my office, talk to me on it, my office, not a big trouble organizing on it.
Well, it's just something that I had brought up before, and it's, it's an ongoing issue.
We're looking good.
Uh, the crosswalks at Boswick Street, again, it's, we were going the other night, going out, and there was a mother and a child, a small child with a baby carriage, with a child in it. We stopped, and again, crosswalk issues that are ongoing. The, we stopped, and three cars came by and hit their son. The right on red issue in the village is, people are constantly doing Boswick Street, especially the four corners, and going back to the traffic for others, I don't, I know Randy was working on the issue with the speeding, but at the four corners and on Boswick Street, they're constantly just not stopping for the right on red, and they just turn. And I've seen it at Boswick Stewart's, and it's a lot up here. The parking, I know we don't have anybody that's checking for the parking violations, but the thing that really kicked me off the other night was, we were coming back to getting ice cream, and here's a cab over pickup truck with a large tow behind flatbed trailer by Direct's, parked all the way up almost to the crosswalk with it extending back. And at the post office again, parking on a crosswalk down by Kathy's the other day, coming back up, I pride myself on stopping at the crosswalks for the people to go across. And just as I was getting to the crosswalk, because a pickup was parked there, right on the crosswalk, right in front of it, a guy stepped out, I didn't see him, and all of a sudden, he stepped out. And I didn't have time to stop, and I looked to the crosswalk, but in A and J, parking in front of the hyer, seeing people there all the time. And then the last thing, not the last thing, I have one more thing I wanna just throw out. Mister skateboarder, as I call him, there's a kid that's a member of the, less wear a hoodie and had the hoodie up, skateboarding, he comes down Boswick Street, middle of the traffic, going against traffic, coming down. Last Saturday, he was coming down the sidewalk by Wally's with a bicycle right behind him. And on Wednesday of last week, he was coming down the North State Street, down by the Dollar Store, coming down through there, in the middle of the street with traffic right behind him.
There's someone that wears a brown hood.
Huh?
There's still one that I'm thinking of, wears a brown hood.
There are several of them that wear a brown hood.
I don't think it's one of them.
This is a younger kid.
Foot flops too.
Yeah, yeah. But he, he doesn't play often.
Is that a violation, I mean?
Of the law?
I'm not sure, I don't have the blue.
But, you know, the kid's name's gonna cause an accident, and eventually, he's gonna get hit, because he doesn't any different times, he's weaving into the traffic right in the middle of the street. And the last thing is, talking to some people. I know this is maybe something that I can talk to you more about, Randy, about. We used to have, the guys walk the street once in a while, and stop into the stores, and this is a person that has a business. Was saying that the only time that they see the, the police is either sitting in a car or driving. So it kinda got in my mind, and it's something that I'd like to talk to you about, Randy, that kinda tweaked in my mind about something to kinda help you out in community relations when it comes to some of the business people, what, at least what this person says.
Sure. Invitation to you as well, board members, I mentioned it before, if you ever have issues.
Exactly, it's not issues, but it's safety things that I see around the village, that I can't.
All those, except for the last one you issued, if you see that, it's a concern that time, pick up the phone, call dispatch. You're seeing it happen at that time, hard part to be, who knows where.
Like I said, a lot of these things I see when I'm, you know, driving through town, or.
Pick up the telephone, call dispatch, and help dispatch students, do they at least come check the area?
So yeah, I'll talk to you about this, this last one, which is kind of something that maybe would help kind of community relations part. I guess that's all I got.
Bring us down to executive session, nobody's got anything for that. So before I ask for adjournment, I'm gonna ask for a couple people to stay and help me put the tables and chairs back, because the town does not have a meeting tomorrow. Normally, they have a meeting after the next day, because we're a week behind. So other than that, motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion, I'll say.
All favor?